Commissioners Brooks, Matari, and Duncan, are there changes to the agenda? Nope, all right, public comments.
I have a public comment.
Okay.
I am still concerned about taking action during status update. I think that's a time for conversation and discussion because we don't have any other time for that, so.
So Bruce asked for these things to be action items, so.
Well, hold on, let's just be clear here. The, there's a couple of different ways to approach this, okay? The reason why some of these are action items is because, for example, if David Mendez from Heree brings something to us, we have a choice of either hearing about it and having to have to reschedule another meeting in two days, or take a week until it goes on a business meeting. So if the item is time-sensitive, then it's just a matter of do we want to reschedule another meeting? The, well, that's one item. And I understand your concern, Commissioner Brooks, because I agree with you. We don't want to have that creep where we start making business meetings, you know, two times a day. Because the idea was to be discussing these things. The question is, do we want to have the Heree-David Mendez update at 2:00 in our business meeting, or do we want to have it at status update? Which most of it is just update information. The other item with Bowton to present add-on pricing, I think, again, that's one of those optional things. It's better to have it and not use it than to not have it and need it. The only other item I have here has to do with whether or not we want to proceed with terminating a contract that requires a minimum of 30 days' notice. So in an effort to avoid, you know, having a two-day meeting to stay within that 30 days, the idea was that we would agree on something if we agree on termination so that it could be on the next business meeting.
So it's discussion?
It's, in essence, a discussion with a direction.
Well, that's fine. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, but there's.
That way, if I'm, if I'm watching it at home, or if I happen to wander in here, I go, oh, they're going to make a decision at the next business meeting.
Yeah, well, I think part of it is the fact, and, you know, again, is, do we want to be in a situation where we have a discussion and we would like to be able to have the option to make a decision or provide direction versus just discussion and not being able to? So, but I agree with you. We don't want to create this creep of having these two meetings where things can get slipped in. The idea is that the big decision should be at the business meeting.
I think all decisions should be at the business meeting.
Yeah.
And, and sometimes it's a matter of scheduling and thinking ahead.
Yeah.
Well, and there's a lot of direction we can give without having an action item.
Absolutely.
So the action, yeah, the action item would be more like if we're going to change policy, spend money, stuff like that. So if we look at today's agenda, the contract employee with, the first item could just be a discussion item because it's, we're not going to terminate the contract this morning. The second one really should be discussion, and the reason is, this does not give enough information as to what decision we would be making on that. So if David brought a specific item to us, we really shouldn't take action under just the update. But number three is absolutely an action item today because we're going to be voting on those changes, if that makes sense.
Well, we'll see what those changes are.
Correct. But, I mean, we'll be voting one way or another, I mean, to, or not take action if we're not going to.
Yeah, I just didn't have anything other than just a go over pricing on those items left out due to budget concerns, so.
Yep. All right. Item one, contract employee with Transit Department, Bruce.
We have a 90-day contract that requires a 30-day termination. I haven't heard anything about what is happening with that contract, what kind of productivity we've been getting. We're paying $15,000 a month, so I was just curious as to what is happening on that front.
Okay, so she is still working on the triennial review. The documents are due by February 29th. And then what will happen is FTA will review the documents, they will come back with a visit date, and questions based on the answers to those, those documents provided. So at this point, the Transit Department is not ready to take these things on without that extra help. And they have also requested that this contract be at least through the visit date.
The visit date?
Yes.
And when is that expected to be?
Last time, it was in July, so we'll see what happened. It will not be later than August, it's in the fiscal year, and so.
So what will happen between now and the visit date? Are we just going to pay someone $15,000 a month to wait?
No, there are things to be updated, like the disadvantaged business there, and I can get you a whole list of policies that could be updated.
Well, I think that's important, because the information I have on this triennial report, and if you could pass a sheet down to Commissioner Brooks, is this is a list of what needs to be done, and as you go through that list, there's very little that this contractor is providing. Usually, it's in conjunction with another contractor on some of the more important issues. And so I would argue that if this report has to be turned in by the end of this month, that we should provide a termination, and then if, if we need to, look at an hourly rate on an as-needed basis. But my concern is that this will just keep dragging out and dragging out, and we're going to start looking for things to do to keep somebody busy, when, and the reality is that, you know, most of the work for this triennial review is not even being done by this person. And we have another contract with a former employee who, I believe, does most of that work.
Well, I would be happy for you to meet with the Transit team, because what they have told me is that the amount of work provided by this contractor is not going to be able to be absorbed by the existing employees.
Yeah.
So that would be something that would need to be addressed.
So they, so from my understanding, FTA could take up to four months before, so that would be another $60,000.
Yep, I'm, I'm happy to revisit the terms of the contract. We can absolutely do that.
I think that what we should do is put in the termination and then revisit a, an hourly contract for the things that they might need help with. And then the question is, do they need help with administrative work, or do they need help with chalk marks? And what I mean by chalk marks is, you're asking someone for their expertise on what to do. And usually, that's very different and a lot less time-consuming. But if we're going to pay someone $15,000 a month to do administrative work, I think we could get a much better deal. If we're going to pay somebody $15,000, or pay them an hourly rate, like an attorney, for advice on what to do, where to fill this out, can you review this report, or something like that, I would be much more open to that.
Okay.
But I think it's a poor use of taxpayer money to be paying someone $15,000 a month and then start figuring out, what are we going to do to keep them busy for up to four months until we have a visit date?
Not a problem. We'll go look at that and see if the contractor would be interested in an hourly contract.
So what would that mean for this particular contract? Are we going to plan on sending a termination notice next week, or approving one in the board meeting, or would?
Phil, what are your thoughts?
Well, again, I, we got to be open about what we're doing, and I agree completely with Bruce as far as, it doesn't, it looks pretty thin here, what's, what's being done. I mean, I'd like that job myself, for 15 grand, and I have a real problem with it. So the sooner the better that we renegotiate what's being done for what. I like the idea of an attorney-type rate, together with, can we see, you know, a billing statement?
Absolutely. And, you know, the other thing, too, that I would just like to point out, that if I hadn't put this on here, we wouldn't be getting these, even having this discussion. We've had almost two months with this contract, and I haven't heard anything about what is being done, how much time is being put into something. And I kind of feel like, you know, if that information's not going to be presented to the board, then it must not be that important. And if it's not that important, then we shouldn't be paying for it.
Okay.
So, I mean, I.
If you would like weekly updates, I can do that.
I think, I think what needs to be done is, instead of, you know, just telling, it should be showing. You know, because that's what a billing statement from an attorney will provide. It says, this is what I'm working on, this is, this is how many hours it takes to do these things. Because my concern is that just because people say something doesn't mean it necessarily is. And, you know, this is a lot of money. I think it comes out to about $180,000 a year. And I'd like to at least understand, what is it, what is it that the county is getting in value in return? And I just haven't heard anything. I heard 11 hours on one project, and then now the triennial review. But then when I look at the sheet, again, I just don't see that being worked on by anyone, mostly by another contractor that we have who appears to be doing the work.
Okay. I also, if you would like these toggle updates, it shows hours, would that be helpful to you?
I think anything that shows value that's being provided to the county is always helpful for this board when it comes to making a decision. This was a, a contract that we spent a fair amount of time putting together. It's probably one of the more expensive contracts I think we have for anyone that's ever worked here. And so I think it would be prudent to provide information about what's actually being done. Just that, I guess we're going to instruct, direct counsel to put together a termination letter for next week?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that any one of us can do, it's just a paragraph memo.
As long as it's compliant with, you know, the terms of the agreement, which I would prefer the, the drafter of the agreement to have the termination language there.
Would you like to do that?
If that's how we're going to make sure it gets done, yes, I would be happy to do that.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else on that?
I have nothing else, thank you.
All right, item two, Justice Center update from Turner and Townsend Heree. Mr. Mendez.
David Mendez with Turner and Townsend Heree, report on contract status at the new expansion of the Justice Center. Got John Staub here with the contractor to go through the items we promised you for today. I'll just, heads up, we added a column in there on the right that's in yellow. Those items are rough order of magnitude, costs, we don't have finalized costing in on that yet.
Say those items in yellow are what?
The items in yellow on the, the right column, that's a rough order of magnitude, so that's an estimate, that's not quotes from subcontractors yet. John, do you want to go through those, those items? Yeah. So this is a list, just to, a reminder of what we're doing, this is that list that we presented of potential betterment items for the, for the building.
Yeah, so John Staub with Bowton Construction, for the record. As David mentioned, that the ROM column, that stands for rough order of magnitude, that's preliminary pricing that we don't have firm commitments from our trade partners on, but just to give you a sense of just that rough magnitude. So really, what we'd like to present today is the in-review column, which is firm committed pricing that's ready for your evaluation and decision. So starting at the top, item A1, the Sally Port slab thickness, $5,259. As discussed previously, that's to increase the durability of that slab above and beyond just the minimum requirements. Item B1 is the enhanced saddle flashings, that's a ROM of $50,000. There's 11 locations, and we're just awaiting our trade partners' pricing on that. But again, we have a fully warranted flashing detail, this is just to supplement that and increase the durability of that. Item B2, we're awaiting a little bit of clarification on what we can and can't do on the existing building per code, so that pricing is just a placeholder until that's defined. Yes?
This is to. This is to remove a window or to add windows? I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah, so, good clarification, our current scope of work, the contract documents show us removing an existing window and infilling it with a solid wall in the office that's just north of the judge's office in the southwest corner of the existing building. And so this price would be, instead of infilling it with a solid wall, to put back a, potentially a fire-rated window in that opening to maintain daylight in that office.
And that office still has one window?
That one would not. The one in the judge's office in the, in the southwest corner does maintain one window.
Okay, this is the one that's just north of that?
Just north of that, yep.
Okay.
And so just to be clear on that one, so we'll talk about that later, but the view would be side of a building, so it's daylighting.
Yeah. So could you do like a frosted glass or something, or?
Yeah, you could put window film if privacy is a concern, or you just standard window shade as well, so they could regulate how much daylight comes in.
Okay.
Item C1 is, again, a rough price, but to switch the public restroom, all the sinks from a, we call it a drop-in style, where it has a lip on it, it's a little harder to clean, but more economical, and then switching to integral solid surface, so seamless, easier to wipe down and clean, roughly $5,000. The next two are for solid surface, and we're just waiting on a little bit of clarification on exactly what solid surface material goes where to be able to firm those prices up, but roughly $25,000 and $50,000 for items two and three respectively. Item C4 is that ceiling tile upgrade that we talked about for acoustics and durability. That is roughly $45,000 to $50,000 square feet of ceiling tile, at a little over a dollar a square foot, so that's the firm price on that one, $70,943. Item C5 is the woodlook ceilings in the, I think there's five total conference rooms, levels one and, I believe it's just level two, actually, and that would be to go to that woodlook tile for $19,893. Item six is, I actually just received some preliminary pricing on that in between the time that this was published and right now, that's roughly $175,000 for all three courtrooms to go from plastic laminate to, to a wood veneer paneling on all the millwork within those three courtrooms. $170, $175,000.
$175,000, excuse me.
Yes. And again, that's preliminary, we can firm that up and present that again. Item C7 is acoustical door seals on the bottom of 26 selective doors throughout the Level One and Level Two. This is around the secure detention cores, those doors that separate that secure area from the courtrooms, and then around the courtrooms themselves, at the judges' offices and at the jury rooms. 26 total doors to add a automatic door bottom that drops down when you close the door to increase the acoustic retention. $9,283 for all 26 doors. Item C8 is at the bailiff's office on the main level to change that glazing from just standard interior glass to Level One ballistic glazing. Just a placeholder there, $5,000 roughly. Item D1 is the one camera that was identified to be added in the Sally Port for increased coverage, and the rough-in of that, the back box and wiring is $1,250, and then that camera itself would be by the owner's vendor, so that price is not included in that $1,250, to be clear. Item D2 is not applicable, there's no card readers that need to be added. Item D3 is a future placeholder for audio/video system rough-in that's not currently in our contract, and that's awaiting a design on what that system is. So that's the whole list. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions on these?
Could you just run through C2 and C3 again?
Yes, C2 and C3 are to change, so currently, the countertops throughout the building, the, we're using a solid surface, like a quartz or corian type of material, at some of the higher touchpoints already, that's built into our current contract price. So for example, at the security reception desk in the main lobby, we have it there, a handful of other transaction tops throughout the building, it's already in there. This, and then the back of house, like the break rooms, for example, are all plastic laminate countertops, and so this price would be to switch that to solid surface. And then C3 is all the other areas. So C2 is for specifically countertops that have sinks in them, which are more susceptible to water damage over time, and solid surface holds up much better than plastic laminate does over time in areas where there's water. And then C3 is all of the other countertops that don't have sinks in them, for example, at the judge's benches, other areas throughout the building. So that's what those two prices are.
And then remind me, this right here is plastic laminate?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
I really don't understand this. Who is suggesting or preliminarily approving these changes?
So these were, these were ideas brought forward by the team in response to a request from the board in January, I believe it was, for any ideas that we have for things that increase the performance or the durability of the building over time. So the bid documents were set up for the lowest initial cost, this is being brought forward as potential enhancements to.
An add-on.
Correct.
So would it be fair to say that those were value-engineered items out of the design, and now we're, when we came in at a more reasonable cost estimate, we're, we're looking at braying some of those ideas back in that are more durable?
Ken, Ben, do you have anything to add to this list?
What Dave said.
You'll, you'll have to.
What I was going to say.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, it looks like we only have about half and half.
Yeah.
Solid numbers as opposed to not, so is there something timewise that you need an answer on today?
The only one, there's maybe two items that we could use direction on, and that would be item A1 for the Sally Port slab thickness, and item C7 for the door seals, and that's because we're currently reviewing those door shop drawings, and it affects how those are ordered.
Okay. Are either one of you ready to make a decision on those two items? The, it's about $14,000.
I am not.
I am, but I can wait, I'll just tell you my thoughts. You know, the thing about the, first of all, my propensity to agree with making any changes is under the context that this will not cause a delay and cause any other overruns because of that. So it's, I, I conceptually agree to these things with the understanding that the contractor, Bowton, is going to be able to provide this, and it's not going to have any kind of a domino effect on any other component of construction. But with that said, I do believe that it's probably worth reinforcing the slab, mostly because we started off with these smaller vans, and then we just ordered a significantly larger, heavier van. And typically, if there's a change in the vehicle, no one's going to say, hey, let's go back to the building and look at the engineering to make sure that the concrete is strong enough. And so to me, it's just $5,000 to actually help mitigate potentially a bigger, heavier vehicle pulling into there and causing excessive wear and tear on the concrete. So it's a small price to pay for a lot more durability. The other item, which I'm fine with, is the acoustical automatic doors, because the last thing anyone wants is some screaming, raving inmate that is interrupting court cases. So I think that, again, that's a small price to pay to run a proper courtroom. And so for those two items, I'm okay with approving that, but I am fine waiting, too, so that Commissioner Brooks has some time to reflect on that.
So I, I'm ready to make a decision today.
Okay, I'm not.
Okay. So.
On both of those items, we could wait until next Tuesday and have no impact to the schedule.
Okay, so is that enough time? Okay, but it sounds like it's worthwhile to add back in. When we're talking about adding any of these things in, is this all from construction contingency, owner contingency, or design contingent? So it's all from design contingency? Okay, so that $800,000 would be reduced essentially by, if we agreed to everything, it's about $335,000? Right, ish?
I do have a question, though. Since we have David Mendez here, I'm just going to have to put you on the spot because you represent the board here. If you were in my shoes, where would you lean with those two particular items?
With those two items, from the discussions I've had with bailiffs, from my experience with concrete that's exposed, granted, this is under a building, but it's also exposed to weather because those doors open and close. I, I think those both represent good value to, to the county, and I would, I would accept those for the, the amount of added dollars that we're talking about, I think it's good value.
Okay.
As being good custodians with taxpayer dollars, I, I think that's well, money well-spent.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else for the update, or anything else for the, any other questions for the add-on pricing, or?
No, we are just, okay, a couple, a couple of things that we're working on. So as you see, the, the design team is here today, today and tomorrow, is that correct? So reviewing, onsite review, everything is, has been online meeting, so they need to meet with the contractor, go through scheduling issues, design issues, plan review issues. They're here to answer any questions you might have on what's going on from their perspective. But from a cost standpoint, we approved last week CCD number four. That was mainly, there was a landscaping issue and structural issues. We're working on CCD five, which will include comments from the reviewers, so whether it be the city or the county reviewers, so they're working on, on finalizing that. So we should get all comments back. We don't have a defined date yet, there's some scheduling issues at the city, I believe, to get those finalized, but we, we should be presenting you with what those costs are going to be probably in the next two meetings that we, that we have. And again, those will all be part. next two meetings that we have. And again, those will all be part of design and construction contingency items.
All right. And then, you'll just get us these updated numbers as soon as you get them. We don't have to wait till next Tuesday if you get them sooner.
Okay. Yes.
But that would be, that'd be helpful, because I would probably, if we had more solid numbers, I could make decisions based on all of it next week. Do you need more time?
I will update that budget sheet and send that over to you. Work with Brandy on that.
Okay.
I kind of see where my head is leaning with most of this stuff. The only one I really have a question on is the B2, Bravo 2, replace existing window in lieu of removing and infilling.
Right.
I'm not fully sure I understand what the implication is on that.
Okay.
But if it's facing the southwest, I'm sure for at least a few months of the year, it's going to be pretty hot.
So, the southwest corner office has windows on the south and the west. Such a weird angle right there. It's not really exactly southwest. This is the one next door.
Mm-hmm.
This is the one next door. So, this one doesn't have, won't have any windows at all. It will just be the infilling of that. So, it'll be just an office, like an interior office, no windows at all. So, is it worth $25,000 to have natural light in that one office?
Commissioner, sorry for interrupting. We do have a plan showing what we're talking about. If you want to look at it on paper.
Sure. Well, I mean, I don't think we're going to make a decision today, but I would love to have a copy of that, so I could at least see what it is we're talking about.
Yep. And so, yeah, I do have my leanings as well on a lot of this stuff, but I just want a little bit better numbers, just so we know exactly how much we're cutting into design contingency. And also, my understanding of design contingency is, we held this back even though typically, at this stage in the game, we wouldn't need this money. Right? So, this money is pretty safe if we were to go with many of these changes, that we're not going to come up short down the road and needing this contingency later.
That's correct.
Okay.
That was an option that we decided to leave that in. So,
Okay.
Typically, that would be removed at this point.
All right. And then, anything in here would cause a delay or overlap? Okay.
No.
Okay. Perfect. I guess that's it, unless you want to go over any of these.
Now, David, did you want to say something?
Commissioner Metari, you mentioned two parts to your concern over cost. The second part of that is that when the contractor reviews these changes and reviews pricing, they're taking into account all of their subcontractors. So, it's speak now or hold your peace kind of a situation. So, you've mentioned that to me a couple of times. That's a good concern and a good question, but I want to assure you that that's how they're looking at these items.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that. And, you know, it's really just a matter of making sure that we don't find ourselves with this small, little decision that seems so innocuous, and it ends up creating this domino effect.
Not to say that that hasn't happened, but yeah, it's a really, it's a valid concern, and that's, but that's the way we are looking at these things, is that everybody's given that information, they review it, and then the contractor assembles those potential changes, or not potential, but costs.
Sure. And the only other comment or question I would really have, and it's really just to kind of clarify, you know, how we all ended up working together here. But you and I don't have any conversations outside of these meetings typically, do we?
Not typically. When we first started talking about this contract, we spoke what you were looking for. And ever since then, everything's been in this setting.
Yes. And, you know, one of the things, and I know you know this, so I'm not saying this for any other reason, and more for public consumption here, is the fact that, you know, you report to this board, and so, all information that you have to give to any one commissioner should be given to all three commissioners.
I think I made the mistake early on. I did send an email to one of you, and I was informed that that needed to be transmitted to all three. So, I have not done that since.
So, it's very important that, you know, that that's why you report to the board, and that the board gets all the information as soon as it can, as soon as you have it within reasonable time, so that we can look at it and make good decisions together, so that no one commissioner has access to information that the others don't. So, and again, I know you already know that. So, thank you.
I have a question. How many doors are push-button accessible in this new building? I don't expect you to answer this.
It's the, at the main entry vestibule, there's two sets of doors there that have it, and then that's it in the building.
And the exit.
And that...
The exits?
Yeah, the main exit and the lobby. Okay, the main exit as well. Two doors.
I don't think that's enough. Number one, I am fairly grippy when I go around a corner or open a door, and it's difficult for me, even at this point, to get in and out of the restrooms. Very difficult. And I think at least one restroom per floor should have that ability. Otherwise, you know, I find myself, we've got the restroom here on the third floor to be a little easier to open and shut, and I can get in and out of it with ease. But if I were a smaller person or a woman, a small man, I might not be able to. And that's tough. I'm glad to hear the, you know, main doors are accessible. But think about that, because I've had to run from, and Leslie knows, from floor to floor looking for a restroom that I can get into on time and still make it to the meeting, because I pull into the one on the third floor, and somebody's sitting in the handicap stall playing with their iPhone. You know?
So, we retrofitted one of our doors. It cost about $5,000. I'm wondering if it would be less expensive if we did it on the beginning section. So, is that something you could bring a quote back for?
That was the one with a combo on it. I don't think they're as expensive if you don't have a combination.
Correct. Right. It wouldn't be a security door.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's roughly, when we talk about budgetary numbers for auto operators, it's in that range, five to $6,000, including the electrical rough-in and the final connections and all that stuff.
It's a good time to do it now. It'd be fairly...
And what about assists? Like, can you just have one that's just easier to push open, or is that a fire code issue?
Usually, when you put an operator on, they have different settings where if you push it, it can kind of kick in, but it still needs that motorized operator on it to help that out.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it's not, it doesn't really change too much what you order. It just changes how you program it.
Okay. Ken, did you have?
Anybody who doesn't believe it's difficult is welcome to try my wheelchair and get into the restroom.
Ken Gallegos, Lombard Conrad Architects, Architect. The, just for backup information, the ADA operators are not required, either by the ADA accessibility law or by building code. We put those in mainly at the main entry and the main exits on public buildings for convenience. We certainly can put them in on almost any door in the building. There are, there is a family restroom on the first floor and the second floor, I believe, that we could put those on. I plan for that now, but there is, you know, it is an added cost because those typically don't have any of the ADA operators in interior buildings. Every door in the building is required to comply with the ADA pull and push force requirements, and they do. So, the pulling and pushing, that is a function of the, the door closer that's on that door. It's adjusted to a certain force. I think it's five pounds per square foot.
See, I can get out of this door here.
Yeah.
But I can't get in very easily.
Yeah.
It's a heavy door.
Yeah.
And I essentially have to use one arm to pull it open. And then, so what I'm saying is if anybody sees me struggling, please open the damn door.
So, then I'm wondering if these can be adjusted, then?
They should be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Would you like us to provide pricing?
It sounds like four doors, two on one level, two on another level. So, you know, 20 grand, yeah, if you want to see what that...
Okay. We'll work with the architect to select which doors make the most sense and provide pricing on that.
And I'd like to know what your recommendations are.
Ken Gallegos, again, is there other certain doors that we would, you would want us to look at other than restroom doors?
I don't know. I mean, I'd have to go door by door.
Yeah.
But just like I said, getting into this room is a problem. Fortunately, we have little kickstands on the door, and other than executive sessions, people generally have the door open with a kickstand down. And I still manage to hit both sides of the door jamb, but I can get out.
Yeah. The other doors I could think of that, you know, could be beneficial would be the courtroom doors. But those also are a double set of doors, a sound vestibule, right? So, we're, you know, talking probably in the realm of $12,000 per courtroom to add those operators on there, because obviously, we have to have electrical...
We can look at both.
...kind of stuff to get in and out.
Those doors are manned, aren't they?
Yeah.
Are those...
That's what I was going to say, is there's not a whole lot of opportunity for one person to be going in and out of the courtrooms. It would be staffed. So, yeah. Okay. Anything else on the update or the proposed add-ons?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Great. All right. Public comment. Come on up.
Morning. Ron Hartman for the record. On these costs for the one, the window, you're paying to take a window out, and then you're paying to have it filled in. I don't see any credit for the material and the labor that you are going to use to fill it in. To me, this looks like just an add-on, and there's no credit given. I think we need to see a credit, because I'll tell you what, $25,000 for one window seems pretty high to me, when I've already got labor there already. I think that needs to be broken down. I don't see the value here. I see a blind close most of the time. The other one, this first one on the transit department contract, Bruce, I agree with you 100%. The contract should be canceled. There's very little that was described as what the job responsibility is. And I like the idea of going to a support hourly rate with a billing statement showing what was done. I don't see the value in $15,000 a month. I don't see what we're getting for it. We need to terminate it now. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else online, Jonathan? All right. 10:44, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks, David.